He just joined. Yep, he just joined.
All right, so it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and, do you want, Tony, do you want me to open the public hearing?
Yes, reconvene the board. The board is on recess after the earlier meeting ended early. So Madam Chair, if you could reconvene the meeting of the board of supervisors.
All right.
The purpose of the hearings, there's two hearings, two public hearings, as noticed and advertised. One is a budget, a consideration of adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget of the district. And the second public hearing is a consideration of, here, we see public comment on in public hearing. Consider the imposition of non-ad valorem special assessments on lands within the district to fund the fiscal year adopted 2025, 2026 budget. Adoption of a final non-ad valorem special assessment role, provide for levy collection and enforcement of the special assessment, and consider the adoption of Resolution 2025 dash 22, making a determination of special benefit in imposing special assessments and certifying an assessment role for the adopted fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. And if you could, click on 15A, Laura or in or Chelsea. On the hyperlink. No, on the.
Yeah, hang on.
The, there we go. There's an affidavit, a publication from the Fort Myers News Press with regards to the placement of an advertisement. If you can go to the second page. Of that. It's the, there should be another one also. The affidavit for Resolution 20, oh, okay.
I know they're both in there. Is it the?
Yes, that was, well, that was 2025 dash 18 that was advertised, I believe, or, no, okay. I will try.
There's more seats in the front, if you want to. Can't hear in the back. There's room in the front.
Access this on the district website.
What are you looking for? Sorry.
Let me go to the agenda.
Notice affidavit.
That's what this is.
Well, there should be.
This is the second one. This is for B.
If you go to the, go to that one, public hearing affidavit, 15A, yes, click on that. Then if you can go to the second page and enlarge that. That's the affidavit publication for the public meetings and public hearings to see the public input on the budget. And also references the second meeting and public hearing to consider adopting the resolution imposing non-ad valorem special assessments. So we have the affidavit publication for the budget hearing. And then staff will introduce the budget and the board will open the public hearing first. Staff introduce the budget, the board will take public comment, and the board then close the public hearing and consider adopting the fiscal year 2025 budget, 25, 2025, 26 budget. So Madam Chair, I think it would be appropriate now to open the public hearing.
All right, so the public hearing is now open?
Okay.
Do you want to go ahead and present them?
So just for those that are in the audience, please make sure that you sign in. And then if you would like to speak, there's a little half sheet in the back that you fill out and then bring up here. We do have Stephen Blum here with Enfermark to do a short presentation that we do every year on the budget. So I will turn it over to him and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and also then, again, anybody who wants to speak on this proposed budget, register and sign up to speak. After the presentation by staff, make your objections, comments known to the board.
Or voice, Stephen.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
You actually have a good outdoor voice.
I do. Is this good? You guys hear me? Okay. If I waver, if I waver, please, you know, let me know. Okay, so, um, good evening. Stephen Blum from Enfermark. Happy to be here today. So we do have some slides to go through. The first thing I want to mention here is the numbers that I'm going to talk about are from your approved version. And I say that because obviously there could, there could certainly will be discussions and there could be changes during the public hearing. But what you're going to see here is the approved version.
Can you explain the approved version?
Sure.
For the public?
So, and again, back in, wow, what has it been? June?
June.
At June, we, when we had basically approved version of the budget was adopted. And again, that is what was included as a part of the mail notices, the numbers that went out in there, the chart, the key chart. That was what was advertised with all those numbers. That's probably, you know, what you, maybe the pieces of paper you brought with you have. So we're trying to match that up. And then from there, obviously, the board will have the opportunity and listen to discussions on making changes. And I know there, you know, there are definitely going to be some. But I wanted to mention that upfront because I, you know, confusion with numbers, there's a lot of numbers in these slides. And I certainly don't want to, you know, confuse anything. So, but with that, we'll start kind of here with an executive summary of, of everything. So staffing, you can see there's a net reduction of one position. Again, this is compared to your 2025 budget. The actual wages, you know, again, year over year decreased by a little bit, about a little bit over 19,000. There is your 4% wage increase that's in this budget. Now, from there, you can see the next bullet point. I'm talking about spending here in terms of looking at, you know, year over year. And the version that you have, again, this is the, based on the approved version. So again, you know, you can look at it and you can see, now, keeping in mind here that the capital projects are included in here. You can see from, like, you're looking at the enterprise fund with a 2026 proposed budget for you, about a little bit over, you know, 27.6 million. Again, that includes quite a bit of capital projects that I will mention. And again, so forth for the general fund and obviously for the Pelican Preserve. That bottom part of the chart there is your, the assessments. That kind of takes a look. And now that is, that includes debt service. That includes your Lake Bank bonds. All of that is in that annual number. And again, we've got some additional slides that breaks that out. But just want to make sure when you're kind of thinking of this, that you're talking about, you know, basically additional bond for both Gateway and Pelican Preserve. And then for Gateway, the Lake Bank as well, obviously is included in there. So single family, the increase year over year is about $154.84. Again, approved, that's about a 13% change. And obviously, we'll talk about that more. The multifamily has got $126.05. And again, that's a little bit over 13%. And you can also see the Pelican Preserve. Again, single family, $141.18. I'm specifically talking about the change year over year at almost $55 for multifamily. So this is the chart. Again, this was the main one that's been advertised and in your mail notices. From left to right, it breaks it down by funds. So the first thereafter, the product type is the general fund. Then from there, you know, goes into Lake Bank, shows you your debt service, grand total, compares against last year, change in percentage. And you can see here, just looking at the first one, again, it's an echo of what I just said. Gateway, single family, a 13% increase. And then you can go down if you wanted to look at the Pelican Preserve, single family, that's, that is with the 12.2. So this is just the summary of it. I did include the O and M only, so you can see this. And again, it's, it's O and M for both the general fund and the Pelican Preserve. Because obviously, you know, the methodology now is different and combined. And you can see there, you know, again, this is strictly, and you can, it's good to kind of see the breakdown of that, by the way. Based on the new methodology, it shows you roadways, water management, what does that cost look like, parks and wrecks, total admin, and just kind of splits it out. It gives you just a little bit more of a background, a little bit more color on what the different dollar amounts. Again, it all gets added up to give you one assessment amount per unit for 2026. It also is grossed up for discounts. And again, the change over year over year. I talked about staffing already. Here's a little bit of a breakdown for you. Again, net reduction of one. It's a, compare it to 2025. And when you look at it, the real changes are between the parks and wrecks slash other and pools. So they kind of got combined. And again, one, one reduction. The main departments, your utility services, you're seeing there is no change. This gives you a little bit of a staffing trend, kind of, again, it's, it's only five years, but you can see, you know, when you look at, you consider the growth. But then you look at your utility department, you only have, you know, a net plus of two over five years. And then again, some of the, you know, administration has basically stayed the same over five years. Again, just gives you a little bit more color as to, you know, again, operations and public works is a little bit different. I combined the parks and wrecks and pools in this particular chart. But even that, you know, is going actually down two. So again, not a whole lot when you compare it over five years. You're talking, you know, a net of eight positions. Now, from, from this point, I have a slide on each of your significant funds. Again, to provide some more details on this, some of this is kind of repeats itself. But some of the bigger numbers that I really wanted to make sure that I addressed are some of the key initiatives that you, obviously, that the board has talked about, but it's worth mentioning, gross assessments. Again, this is for the general fund, just going up by $578,000. The budget includes, as it stands right now, $279,000. That gets transferred to your capital projects. Again, this transfer is, is a function of looking to the future, trying to make sure that there's some small amount for future projects. There is a use of bond proceeds and carryforward in this budget of about $8.86 million. Again, bond proceeds is, like it sounds, it's from prior years, it's from the 2023 bond that is now going to be used to fund some of the spending. Interest income, $175,000. Again, it's worth mentioning, and in a sense that that is from the hard work of investing the money, making sure that you are utilizing your cash to get some more interest that again goes back into, to cover spending. The Lee County Park impact fees are in here, and that's a little bit under $500,000. And then again, just kind of showing you a little bit of a chart on, on where, just, again, this is just O and M between the multifamily and the single family. Again, we've, we've talked kind of about this, but it gives you some more, some more information. On the spending side, so it's an increase of about $9.6 million. And again, I wanted, thought it was really important to kind of show you the big projects that are in here. And I'll kind of explain why here in a second. But Gateway Commons Construction, $3.2 million. Your admin building, $1.9 million. Public Works, a little bit, $3.5, waterways, $850,000, and then kind of in all other category. And again, not all of these projects, just for clarity purposes, is new money that's going to be generated. Again, we've got bond proceeds that are covering this. You have carryforward that are covering this. And I say that because when you look at the next section, taking out, you know, kind of pulling away the capital projects, the increase is about $368,000. Even that, you can, if you notice and you look at that, I've got stuff in red. A lot of my notes on there are showing you that really this changes are about moving some of the payroll around, meaning it's in one department and summarize it into other places. Within that $368,000, 206 of it is in one line item for tree line for, what is it, marascape? And then some increase in utility fees. So beyond that, you do not have, you know, a lot of money that's being increased in the general fund. And that's obviously by design to try and keep that down, so. Okay, Pelican Preserve, about increase of $471,000. Again, this is O and M. There's no change in the 20, well, actually, there's no annual assessment for 2013. There is a use of reserves and a use of bonds in here that are coloring, covering some of the cost. The net increase in your expenditures is about $1.1 million. And again, I have noted all of the big items in there. The admin building, waterway landscaping actually is going down. A couple of things going down, operating expenses, safety and security is, is being increased. And I have kind of noted some of those roadways, gatehouse, streetlights. I provided again, another trend chart for you to kind of see, you know, fiscal year 2022, multifamily was $913.55. And then in 2026, it's $1,148.17. And you can see single family is right below that. Now, next up is the utility department. We got an increase in terms of what's budget of $651,000. That is your utility billing revenue. You actually have a net decrease, decrease in your operating expenses. And that decreases even including what's put in there for us, a proposed 10% increase in your water and wastewater purchases. A part of the increases, your principal and interest payments on your loans, state revolving loans are, are going up. That is part of the different programs. Those are loans that are already in place. Your reserve program, again, looking towards the future, you have reserves in there about $1.2 million. I've noted your projects. You got a little bit under 20 million in projects. We've, you know, kind of talked about the meter project, force main and admin building. Again, similar to the other loans, the spending has already been taken care of. You've got a loan proceeds, quite a bit of 10 million. You've got grants, 4.6 million that's covering it. And then some reserves of 4.9 million. I keep mentioning that over and over again because, again, you see the top line expenses in the summary. And you're thinking, wow, that's, those are big numbers. Am I being assessed this next year for that? And the truth is, no. There's bonds, there's different funding sources that are already in place to cover them. And that's kind of why I'm repeating myself a little bit here. Next up is your debt service funds. Again, this is the 2023 ones. There's two of them. About $940,000 in principal and interest payments. I did note in there that really the first time that the residents were assessed for this was in this year, 2025. Prior to that, there was capitalized interest as a part of the bond. Again, the, the assessment trend here is going to be level because of the amount every year is going to be the same. I have showed you both the 2023 dash one, which is the Gateway series, and then the 2023 dash two, which is the Pelican Preserve series. Next slide, this is the Lake Bank restoration. There's an increase in there again. As a part of this particular fund, we only assess per whatever loan amount is due in the next year. Meaning there are a couple of loans, I think at least one, that in 2027 is when the first payments start. So we do not assess ahead of time for that. What you're seeing here in this particular chart, again, in 2026, which is $154.82, only covers the loans that are active. And by active, I mean that principal and interest payments are due in 2026. Of note, your original borrowing there is $17.3 million. Your current outstanding is $14.5. I have tried to summarize, and again, there's obviously a lot more detail that goes in to your capital. But I basically tried to summarize it into one slide. Again, just to give some, some, some background, obviously, you've got a lot of different categories. This particular one that you're seeing here is a, what, a six-year plan? Again, each, each one of these projects are reviewed, each one of these funding sources are discussed. For 2026, the total there is a little bit under 30 million. We've been talked quite a bit about carryforward balances. So we did go through and look at what for, again, we started with 2024. And then we did an estimate for this year, 2025. We also included your bond interest income. And again, you can see here, when you look at those three columns and add them up, they're a little, about $4.6 million. Again, we've also split them out for you by fund. And again, the different categories. And we tried, you know, for, certainly for 2025, it's conservative. We wanted to make sure that we did not put money into your carryover that will be needed for projects. Okay, next chart. And again, this particular one kind of shows you some options. And basically, what we're doing with the, with this, and again, there's three here, each box represents an option. And basically, what it's saying is, if I were to do, if I were to put some of my reserves into the current budget, say, okay, here's where we are. And I mentioned, remember, it was 13% of an increase. If I were to use some of the carryforward, these charts show you what the new assessment rate will be. I won't go through every one of them because I know you, you're going to want to discuss the options quite a bit. And we, you know, we certainly have the, our file available. Laura will be able to run through scenarios and then take things in and, you know, and go through each one of these. But basically, you know, kind of the, the final decision, once, before you adopt it, will be which one of these boxes are you interested in kind of putting into your budget? And then the last one, I always try and put in your reserve balances. Again, being very conservative, but also giving you some idea, reminding you that you do have, for example, emergency reserves in the general fund and your Pelican Preserve. Pelican Preserve always has, always has done a great job of splitting it out into a lot of, you know, specialized categories. And then I'm showing you Stony Brook and Town Lakes, the enterprise as well. The blue box that kind of goes towards the bottom there kind of is reflective of what potential other available balances, some carryforward and stuff that would be available. And again, you know, when you start looking at other available funds, it's really going to be at the, the, the board's discretion and based on other priorities and stuff. But this is kind of one of those reference charts that I like to put in here. And, and use, you know, sometimes during the discussion, it's always good to kind of refer back and see what is in your reserve balances. Okay, a lot of numbers. For those of you who like numbers, it's great slides. But certainly answer any questions myself. Obviously, you have some other things you want to talk about, but certainly available for you.
Madam Chair, if I may, again, just to get on the record beforehand, as I mentioned before, we have the notice, the affidavit of publications, and the budget was posted on the district's website. And the timeframe is required by Florida statutes.
Correct.
At least, you know, two days before the budget hearing.
Oh, it's up well before that, yes.
Well, before that. And then we have these, that was placed twice in the newspaper, the Fort Myers News Press, on July 16th and July 23rd. And otherwise, the notice and publication requirements is provided by Florida statutes. Have been, have been complied with with regards to, given the public notice. Also, there's a posting on the door of the building, this building, that there's overflow seating. If no seats are available here over at the church, and that overflow seating availability was also referenced in the public notice. That was in the news press.
Thank you, Tony.
So you've had plenty of meetings since we adopted the high watermark. And there's been, I think we're on version four?
Six.
Six of the budget. And like to just touch on some of the things that have changed since the last time you have seen version five. So with that, I'll turn it to Laura.
Thank you, Stephen. Oh, I put it on my computer so I wouldn't lose it.
And Madam Chair, also, I think Supervisor Panco had some questions after the presentation by staff. As to three options.
Do you want to, should we go over those options now, prior to Laura going over?
I think that'd be a good idea to have that full discussion.
So Carol, you want to bring it up?
So yes, if you could pull up the slide that he had with the three different options, the yellow, blue, and green.
Carryforward.
The carryforward.
Before we dive into that, so at the last board meeting, the board had requested for us to try to, for staff to go back and try to evaluate and how to get the, our, our assessment rates down. And so since then, staff Laura has really put together some numbers and different options on how to fund reserves or not fund reserves and then utilize carryforward money or, Ed, what do you like to call it?
Retained earnings.
Thank you. On how to get the proposed assessments under double digits. So go ahead, Laura.
Okay.
One second. And this is in addition to the multiple iterations of cuts and modifications that we've done since the original approval to date.
Correct.
We'll go over those.
Six different versions.
Six different versions.
This was based on version five, which was the version that was presented at the last board meeting. So the, the first chart in here is the one with the, the yellow one. And what I did is, the reasoning behind the $279,000 for funding the reserves is because that's the same amount of reserves that we funded for the current year's budget. And the board said, let's see what happens if we fund the reserves at the same as what we're doing now. So that's where the $279,000 came from. I did it as if we would do nothing. Well, let me preface this because you're going to notice that it's only 12% versus the amount that was in the slides earlier. And that was in the approved budget. The new charts are actually less because we've made more changes. But some of the changes that we made to help get it down without funding the reserves, we found that the contract price for our street sweeping was incorrect. It was listed in the budget at $47,000. It's actually 11. The board had given us a COLA fund of up to $100,000. Chelsea and I took a real hard look at that, and we believe we can do what we need to do with 75. So that was another $25,000 that came off. There was a small adjustment to the auditor. The original approved one, we had some problems, had to go with this, with our second choice. So that increased the auditor cost by 7,500. And then we also talked about using interest earnings for the bond projects to not have to assess for some of those extra costs that were above and beyond the amounts that were originally covered in the bond. So that's why these numbers you're going to see here, without making any adjustments, are a little lower than what you just saw in that slideshow. And then when we get to the budget, they're going to be even lower. So this is like the middle ground, but I was just was trying to explain kind of how we got here. So I was, we were tasked to come up with a number to try to get to 10%. So that was where I plugged in and played with numbers. And if we used $140,000 of the retained earnings reserves, whatever you would like to call it, carryforward, that got us down to 9.9%. And if we went to $170,000, I was trying to get around 9.5%. And that got us to 9.4. So the impact of playing with the reserves and the carryforward only affects Gateway. It does not affect Pelican. This is just the general fund that I did this stuff in. So none of these changes affect Pelican. Pelican takes care of their own. They made some changes. So then I did the same with funding the reserves at $100,000. Again, using no carryforward, trying to get just under 10%, and then again, matching it up at about 9.5. And then I did it again with not funding the reserves at all. And that actually started us out at 9.6%. And then I got down to nine and then eight and a half.
Laura, these numbers are all inclusive, which include the debt.
Debt service. That's everything. This is all in. So this would be the final total assessment, O and M and debt service.
So with that, we'll turn it over to the board and see if you have any conversations or discussion, any questions for us.
I'll have Carol go.
So my, my question to my other board members would be, what, what are your feelings about yellow, blue, or green? And at what levels?
I'm inclined to go with the yellow, which is 279, what we had before.
So funding the whole 279 in the reserves. And then what, which of the carryover numbers would you be looking at then?
The whole 170.
170?
Yeah, and I think the, the funding resource is important. And we're barely scratching the surface on, on the numbers that we have done calculations on and what's, what's needed. So this gives us a portion of available funding in the future that we can have available to minimize total funding at the point of whatever time we need to facilitate whatever project we're, we're doing. The one question that I have is, what's, I posed this earlier, but I think it, it, it should be talked about in, in this meeting. So the 170 is an arbitrary number that was pulled to get to 9.4. We were to increase that number to lower the percentage, what impact does that have? So if we pull, if we pulled more dollars to offset, let's say if we wanted to get to 8.5, just hypothetically, and we pulled more money in, how would that impact? and we pulled more money in, how would that impact the district and the residents either this fiscal year or next?
I can answer that. In the break between the board meeting and this meeting, with the changes that we made since I published this and funding the reserves at 279 and doing 170,000, we actually are down to 8.4.
8.4 would be, if we don't do anything else in this meeting today?
Correct. Yes, with the changes that I already mentioned.
With the changes we've made.
Funding the 279,000 and using 170,000 to carryforward, it was at 8.4.
But, so still answer the question, if we were to go on top of that, let's say if we wanted to just pull, instead of the carryforward being used at 170, what if we doubled that number?
A minute.
And I don't need the number. I'm saying the money that we pull forward, we would, how would that impact us in the future? It just wouldn't, we wouldn't carry it forward to be part of operating budget for next year.
Typically, at the end of the year, the carryforward money goes into a reserve account in that we have to either use as interest earnings or keep it, keep in the event of an emergency or something happens. So if you choose to use it, then you're spending it to buy down the rates.
That's what I want to make sure it's very clear. And while we just don't take all of it and absorb it back into, that's, I want to make sure that's clear to everyone. So can you just explain that one more time? So we have, we have the carryforward or the unrealized, or the real, what do you call it? Retained earnings.
It goes to unassigned reserves.
Right. So what is the reason why we don't just pull all that forward?
Part of it is because we don't know what it's going to be.
We don't know what that number is.
So we want to be careful that we don't overcommit. You know, it's taking a stab. I think Steven and I had talked, we want to make sure that whatever amount you, there's no problem doing it first, let me just say that. But the dollar amount is where it gets tricky because you want to make sure that we don't use more than we're going to have because we're not done with the fiscal year yet. We still have things, something could happen between now and the end of the year. And if we overcommit the carryforward and we can't support it, then we'll be short.
The other concern.
Yes.
The other concern is separate from what we're discussing tonight, is our requirement to fund our capital reserves in the future. And even at the 279, we are not anywhere near the amount of money we should be footing there. So, yeah, you could do it, but if you did it, that's fiscally irresponsible just to keep an artificially low rate. And sooner or later, we're going to have to pay.
So that.
I know, but I was more for the audience. I know we know.
That money helps us fund what we're.
Yes, we could.
The deficit of us not doing it in our budgeting process.
I could support it to the 279 in yellow, as Flavia said, but if you get below that, we're mortgaging our future. It's just not a good thing to do.
I want to make sure that was clear to everyone why we wouldn't just pull more money forward.
I agree with that also, but with one additional stipulation, as indicated earlier. When we come at the end of the year, November, somewhere in that neighborhood, we start having monies that what some call carryover, others call retained earnings. We've been very successful of having that money. But like Laura said, you just can't gamble away money that you're 100% sure that you've got. But I would stipulate that if we take and this money, pull it out, when we get the retained earnings, we put that money back in.
Absolutely.
We replenish.
I think that is the condition that we talked about it, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Laura or staff or Steven right now?
No, we benefited from the earlier discussion. We just wanted to do it again for the public.
So do you need a motion then?
No, we have to open it. We have to open it for public.
I have public comments.
No, 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 just for this.
No.
That we're choosing.
I think what's important is we have board consensus.
I think that's correct. And then open it for public comment. The public made the comment, the board will address issues and their comments or concerns raised by the public and have discussion amongst itself after the close of the public hearing, then discuss action the board will take.
And I would like to also reduce the budget by the $40,000 that is the amount that we pay to the county.
County Sheriff's Office.
The Lee County Sheriff's Office for the cameras.
We don't pay to the sheriff, we pay to FLOC, but it's for the license plate readers.
We own those.
Correct.
Those are ours, didn't have anything to do with the county.
Correct. So it's the license plate readers.
Yeah. Can we just talk about that for just for one second?
Yes.
So if we choose not to renew the service, because that's what we're paying for the 40, renew the service, the cameras stay intact, they're just become non-operational? Is that, or are they pulling, are we leasing those cameras?
They lease it, they take it all.
So if we stop, they withdraw the cameras?
Correct.
We no longer have that service?
There's a $3,000 charge.
I was going to say, there's going to be some payment here.
Because of how the two contracts were set up, so there would be a $3,000 charge for four of the cameras. We were at the renewal point, we can give plenty of notice for six, but we'll have to spend that money to get out of that contract.
The $3,000 per camera or is it?
No, that's total.
Okay, it's not, it's.
All 8,000 or 16 or 18.
We have 16, yeah.
We would get out of it.
And we have not signed the renewal contract.
Correct.
I know you and I talked about this earlier, okay.
Further conversation, what do we need to do now? I agree with that, I will second that if it's a motion.
Not right now.
Again, the board has outlined and discussed the various options, and the public has a sense, consensus of it, and so the board, public can then comment on both the budget that's been advertised, the budget that's been available, the budget that was presented, and also the discussion the board just had.
Okay.
On certain aspect, I would suggest open up the public comment at the present time. And then at the close of the public comment, the close of the public hearing, then the board have discussion about how to address the issues that have come up, as well as any items that the public brings forward to the board.
I have just one question around that. And I know you've done a lot of research on this. Is there, because I think when we had the presentation on it, we saw the numbers, at that point, there was, I could definitely see the reason why the county would want to have those cameras in place because it gives them more ability for footprint coverage for their purposes of identifying and potentially actioning adverse actions or activity. Where I think, where I personally, my feelings were, it was hard to directly correlate that, what we're paying to actual benefit to the community in arrests or, you know, whatever. It was more subjective than it was quantifiable, in my opinion. But have you looked at, are there cheaper alternatives for us for that?
We did look at other alternatives. They are not cheaper. And honestly, when I spoke to the competitor, when they found out what we were paying per camera, they said that was a pretty good deal. But obviously, $2,500 a camera is pretty costly once you get to 16 of them.
So in a nutshell, we are subsidizing capability for the county. Okay.
Did they give back, Lieutenant Vaughn report back to us what actions they had taken that we asked for? They did not have it when I went over there to the LCSO.
I think the chair was following up on that.
Did they give you anything?
No, so I follow up with him, I follow up with him last week and the week before. He was working on it, and I follow up with him during the meeting, and he pretty much told me that I needed to do a records request to get that information.
Okay.
And I'll just leave it at that.
If I could just chime in, I don't know if it makes any difference or not, but the thing with the FLOC cameras is any law enforcement can request access to the cameras. So I can tell you that right now, both Lee County and the City of Cape Coral have access to the information from the cameras. Oddly, the City of Fort Myers does not. So all they have to do is request it, and they'll be granted access. But both the Lee County Sheriff and the City of Cape Coral, or Cape Coral Police have access to the footage from those cameras.
And just one last question. Is there any other benefit to us having these? Is there any insurance discounts or any other benefit to us?
The district does not see any direct benefit.
Correct.
Thank you.
The homeowners could see the benefit. It's the same as having a gated community versus now, but it's up to the individual, up to them communicating.
Insurance agency whether they're.
Yes. Go ahead, Tony.
Madam Chair, I was just wondering if Laura or Chelsea could sort of calculate, based upon the discussions to date, on the carryforward amount, as well as the reduction in the budget from the cameras, what those numbers would be, so the public can hear that for their comments.
I've done everything but take the $40,000 out for the camera, so I can do that in just a minute.
Look who's here.
So it'd actually be $3,000, so I could take 37 out? You said $3,000 to get out of the contract?
We will pay that.
Okay, so it'd be zero. All right, give me just a second.
Is there any other questions while she reduces?
So if we reduce that, we reduce about 37,000?
No, we'll pay, we'll pay. Get out of it this year, we have available funds, so. Any other questions regarding the budget? So one other thing I just want to add in is we did go through from when October through March, we went through a new assessment methodology. And we had every, every meeting of the board, we discussed the new assessment methodology. This budget will be the first budget with the new assessment methodology, which, you know, things were changed. You all decided on some of the changes on those formulas. So part of the impact is shown here, too.
And maybe just for the audience's information, the advisory committee to this board from Pelican Preserve, the P-PAC, also spent the past five months reviewing their budgets, not only their subcommittees, but also the main budget. And they did make a reduction also, so that the amount of money that they're, they are also using some carryforwards. And so that amount of money will reduce it down to 2.9, I believe.
Potentially, yeah, we can pull.
2.8, yep, that's already in there.
2.8 from the published 12 something.
Yep, so here is, I'm just going to put this up here. This, this chart is, I just removed the $40,000 that, for the cameras. This includes the yellow chart information with the $279,000 funding of the reserves, the changes that I mentioned earlier, the reductions from the numbers that we brought down, and then the one where we had to increase by the 7,500 for the auditor. And then this does also include the $170,000 of carryforward. So it went from where it was to 8% for Gateway Single Family Homes, and you are down here at 2.8% now. Because some of the changes that I made were in the shared costs for the COLA fund. So Pelican did get a small, a small reduction from that.
It just ripples through the formula.
Just a little bit, yep. The majority, everything but the staffing is just the general fund.
I have one good question, just looking at, on page seven, what is our fountain maintenance?
Roundabout.
Yes.
What is a dollar? What do we have budgeted for next year for maintenance?
Over there, sorry.
And our staff maintain that in-house. We went away from contracting it because.
Is that why, is that why I don't see anything? Because that's what I want.
There's nothing there.
That's why.
Yeah, it's, we purchase chemicals, so.
That did change then because we had, we had a few months, like during one of the phases of the budget, there was a dollar amount to that, and now it's zero. Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't miss that.
I've got a question. Check the math. Laura, would you go back to the chart before? Keeping in mind this chart right here, the yellow, Gateway Single Family is 111 net change, okay? Go back to the chart before you had, the chart we had that went out on the street, as I recall or as I've got in my notes, was 134522, okay? Is that correct?
1345, yes.
134522 to 1285 is a reduction of $60. Where did 111 go?
It goes from here to here. It's the current, the recalculated number, not the 13. It goes off the actual number versus last year. It goes off the recalculated assessment, not the high watermark.
So, okay, so.
Because it's the real number, not the approved number.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get the math of how, if we have 111 reduction, it's not 111 off of 1345.
No.
It's off of last year's number.
Yes.
Last year's.
The net change is the current, is the fiscal 26 less the fiscal 25.
So the net result of what we have done totally takes the typical single family owner in Gateway and reduces 1385, or 1345 to 1285.
Correct.
And again, this all assumes that after the board adopts the budget, which is a different document, that the board at its assessment hearing applies the assessment methodology in the manner articulated and previously approved to come up with the assessment unit numbers that are in here.
Correct, yeah. This is just based on everything that you, all the changes that you've spoken about so far, and with the methodology that you've approved to use for the, to date for the budget.
So what I'm trying to get to is today, everybody got the good news that, or yesterday, either one, got their tax information. This number, if you live in Gateway, that number you got, add 128562. Is that correct?
If the board.
If the board approves.
Adopt.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people understand, Tony, when they come up, we're talking a lot of stuff that I know when I was sitting on that side of the deal here, it was, it was in Greek. Didn't understand half the stuff of what was going on. I want to make sure that when they come up, the specifics are, how much is it going to cost me if we approve this? And that's the number I'm looking for, 128562.
Correct, and that's all in, that's O&M and debt service.
So you speak Greek now, right?
Now in English. Now in English.
Hand there. Yes, Tony. Go ahead and open the public hearing.
And for that, there's a, we received a letter, I received a letter forwarded to manager who has forwarded to the board. It's couched as objections to district fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and imposition of special assessments. It's by Jennifer Kalinsky Esquire of Kalinsky Van Wick on behalf of the Pelican Reserve Community Association, PPCA. That letter and all its attachments will be made part of the record. Noting the objections as outlined in that the, on behalf of the Pelican Reserve Community Association, Ms. Kalinsky objects to the imposition of special assessments utilizing the district's recently adopted operations and maintenance assessment methodology to the district's proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. And that PPCA continues to object to the application of the adopted methodology to the proposed budget. And that PPCA intends to further state objections on the record at the August 21st public hearing for the proposed budget and imposition of special assessments related there, too. So again, the full letter and all the attachments are, will be made part of the minutes and the record.
Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
And do you want us, would now be the perfect time, or do you want to open public comment? We'll mention Mr. Rod Senior's comments that he provided at the regular.
I think that'd be appropriate also, yes.
Okay, I do have, during our board meeting at 3 o'clock, Rod Senior presented his public comments because he was unable to make the public hearing. He did supply a written copy of what he spoke about during, during the meeting, and that will also become part of the permanent record.
He did email that to you, to your district, to your district emails?
Yes.
And have you received any other, I'm sorry?
No other written comments.
And not by fax or email, hard letters, correspondence?
Nope, just, nope, just those two, which I got today, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, you ready to open public comment?
Okay, when, I'll call the name, and I'll let you know who's up next. I have three. Just a reminder, you have three minutes to make your public comments. You don't, the microphones are awesome. Please state your name for the record when you get up to the podium, and once you state your name, I will start your time. There is a device on the board, or on the thing up here, it's got a green, yellow, red light, so it'll be green when you start getting close, it flashes yellow when it flashes red, then your time is up.
If you would like to speak, make sure you fill out those half sheets and print those in as soon as possible.
And I would suggest also that when the person signs up to speak, if they indicate that they're speaking on just the budget or the budget, and then also want to speak on the assessment, I think, because there's two public hearings, it's a caution, they may want to say both, just to make sure they have enough time to provide their comments and objections.
All right. And I'm sorry if I slaughter your name. Paul Vang is regarding the increase in taxes. And you can just step up to the podium if you please state your name for the record, and I'll start your time then.
Hi, my name's Paul Vans. I own a unit, 1,500 square feet. I have a small business, purchased a property, property about nine, eight, nine years ago. And we get my property taxes, and then I noticed, comparing 23 to this new budget, and I noticed there was a $989 assessment. And of course, I didn't like it, but I, I paid it. I didn't come to a hearing to complain. And then, this year, I, I got the paperwork again, and I noticed the increases were almost doubling my county taxes. And to me, that just seems very excessive. It, I'm, I'm all for reasonable increases, but to almost double my taxes in two years, it just, it seems like if that's a trajectory, it doesn't seem tenable to me. I mean, double my taxes in two years, I have 1,500 square feet. It hurts small businesses. And any savvy buyer of commercial properties, I didn't realize I was buying in a CDD area, that could lower my property value. I mean, if someone comes in and says, oh, there's a CDD here, I'm, I'm not going to pay you what you're asking. So, those are my concerns, and I appreciate the opportunity to voice it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, next up, we have Warren Jewell regarding assessment fees. Can please state your name for the record, and I'll start your time.
Oh, my name's Warren Jewell, representing Fort Myers-Burn Company. Really just, you know, I have questions about the assessments and the increases for the commercial. I see them as an increase, but I'm looking up here, and it shows like a decrease. So, was there an actual increase or decrease from last year to this year for our assessment fees? I'm guessing yes. But really, what, what is the benefit to the, the commercial units for, like, the lake improvements? I mean, our drainage ditch and our lake hasn't been touched or maintained. Every time we get a strong rain, our parking lots flood out. And so, really, just, you know, questions, just trying to see, you know, what is, what is what here? And if that can be explained in some layman's terms, I would, I would appreciate it. That's really it.
Do you want to touch on that? Or do you want to just take the public comments first?
Do you have the address of the property that's involved?
Yeah.
It's, it's 12811 Commerce Lakes Drive.
Got it on there. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, let's follow up after, let's just go over the public comments first.
Okay, I have one more. Perry Dragon regarding budget.
I won't need anywhere near three minutes since Laura, eminent attorney said most...
Please announce your name for the record, please.
My name's Perry Dragon, Vice President of Pelican Preserve Community Association. Just for the record, wanted to state that we object to the methodology that was used to generate this budget. And beyond that, our attorney sent a letter to you this morning, or earlier today, summarizing our position, so no need for me to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I have one more. Anyone else? Okay. Camilla Saban regarding assessments.
I just have one...
Please announce your name for the record.
I'm Camilla Saban.
Sorry.
Okay. So, was it a year ago that you guys added a special assessment of $1,000 per single-family homes for the next 20 years? Is that correct?
That would be the 2023 bonds. It wasn't, no.
Can't hear you, Laura, I'm sorry.
It was, it wasn't $1,000, but it lasts, this is the first tax year we had the additional amount for the bonds, which are 20 years, but it...
But it is not $1,000, a year assessment?
Yeah, another, I made just a brief explanation. The district imposes a, what's called a debt service special assessment to help pay for long-term borrowing. There was a bond issue, a couple borrowings also by the, bond issue for the administration building parks and other infrastructure. And there was a bond issue, a validation of borrowing to do Lake Bank restoration. And so, that comes under what's called a debt service special assessment. And again, Steven Bloom may want to, Madam Chair, may have Steven again explain why that assessment's being levied this year.
When did that go into effect?
Well, I think maybe Steven Bloom can best address that. Now, the, the other component of the special assessment is the operation and maintenance assessment. Again, to pay for the operation, maintenance, upkeep, restoration, reconstruction, et cetera, of district assets and facilities and management and all those matters. And so, I guess from the standpoint of when, Steven, can you answer a question, Madam Chair?
Like, if you, if you want to look up on the screen, the columns are actually on here. This column here is column G, and you can see it's $155 this next year for the, for a single-family home for the Lake Bank. And then, the 20 years that you were talking about for last year, it's $157, not $1,000.
Much like your municipal governments, we have an operation and maintenance. We have annual costs that, if it's for sidewalks, the roadways, the landscaping, the ponds, that is our annual O&M. And then, we took out long-term debt to cover large capital projects. And those are those two funds that she's referring to. So, the first, on the general funds is our, our annual O&M, operation and maintenance, and then the other two are debts. So, the, the new one, the, the new debt is that 2023 series.
I think what she may be referring to, I...
Well, let's ask her.
So, go ahead. I'm wondering if, because where the confusion comes in, when we sent the letters out before we did the bonds, we sent out as if we were to borrow the whole sum.
All the money, that's exactly right.
And it would be about $1,000 a home for, for single-family homes, had we borrowed all of the money, but we didn't borrow all of the money.
It's going to be staggered.
We really borrowed some of the money, so that's why it's only $157.
Okay, so, that 13, the 1,300, right there?
This one?
Yes.
That's the total. That's the operation and maintenance cost, which we have every year, plus the money for the Lake, for the Lake Bank loans, which are 20-year loans, plus the money for the bonds. So, it's about $300 for debt service, and the rest is operations and maintenance. So, that's not, and that's not on top of what you paid last year. Last year, it was $1,190. This year, it'll be 1,200. So, it's not 1,100 plus the 1,200, it's just 1,200 total.
It's less than $100 increase.
Yeah, $95 more than last year.
I think what Laura...
Less than $100 a month.
Total, that's a year.
Dollar a year increase for you.
That's total for the year.
Okay.
In other words, a month, the room would be full.
Yes.
That's why I'm like, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Now, if you received a letter in 2023 indicating you'd be paying extra number of dollars...
I think that was for the full amount, yeah.
Yes, I know it was.
The district did, what's called a bond validation, to validate the borrowing, to pay for the administration building parks and recreation and other physical capital projects. And at that time, we sent letters out to the property owners saying, this is what the debt service would be if we borrowed the full amount over a period of time based upon certain interest amount. And then, what happens is the district actually issues a bond series or amount, then we know the actual number. And that's what shows up on this chart.
Correct. It is similar to like what we send out, the letter you get in July, we call it like our high watermark, or like the worst-case scenario. So, that's what it was with that initial letter about the bonds. If we had taken out, if we had borrowed all of the money, that was the most that you would pay. But we didn't borrow all of the money, just some of the money.
Possibly, we're discussing, we're assuming that's what it was.
Yeah, that's, we call it like the high water, high water, or, yeah, possibilities.
If you don't have a letter. Steven, anything else you want to add to that, Madam Chair?
No, I mean, just a clarification, that was what it was.
While we're here, Flavi, if you don't mind, if I can just touch on Warren's, Warren's question regarding the commercial parcels. Much like the residential parcels, you know, the benefits are landscaping of all of our, our rights of way, sidewalk maintenance, roadway maintenance, pond maintenance. We have the parks and rec facilities. If you're a, if you're a property owner, you can come, you can get a pool pass. You have access to staff if you need any, if you have any questions. Your utility bill is paid separate, that is not part of this. The streetlights, that was a big project that we just, that we did.
So, there are benefits to both resident and commercial.
From last year's assessment to this year's assessment, what's my increase?
Well, Warren, we can pull your property specifically, and we can, we can address that with you one-on-one.
In general, the total for the commercial properties went down, but because each of the properties is different, some may have gone up, some may have gone down, but we can look at yours in particular. But in general, overall, the total commercial assessment went down 2 points, 2%, at least as of the way it looks right now, sitting up on the screen, so...
Nothing else? No other emails?
Nope, I got nothing else.
Madam Chair, want to ask if there are any other comments?
Any other comments? Anybody that'd like to fill out a paper and have 23 minutes?
Well, I got just one comment, to go back to the Lake Bank debt service, which, according to what we're looking at on the screen, is 15482. And if we don't spend another dollar, it'll probably stay that way until debt's paid. Nope? Okay, then, tell me what, when will that increase or decrease?
It's P and I based on balance, correct?
It's based on balance.
We all hear you, but still, so...
Those are good microphones, too. They would have picked you up, so...
So, again, for the Lake Bank, that column, whatever is outstanding for that year in principal and interest, we only assess that.
Okay, if we never spend another nickel...
It would go down.
It would, but you already, there is at least one more loan that's on the books that's starting next year. So, I don't want to give you any hope. It's going to go up another, I think, another $40.
We don't take out any additional loans.
We don't.
Okay. And just, I'm sure most people understand the concept, but can you just touch briefly on why you're at the podium? Why we do that? Why do we use bonds? Why do we do debt service and amortize over years? When we're talking about the large projects with the shelf life of 15...
Yeah, 30 years.
I mean, keeping it very simple, if you...
$100, $150, so that's right.
The philosophy behind it. No, I mean, that's, that's really it, just the power of money and being able to finance your capital projects versus, you know, you talk about swings in your assessments. You know, if you got a $10 million project, I mean, it would just be impossible for residents to, to finance it all in one year. And also, if you've got something, let's say, an item that has a 30-year shelf life, and you have to replace it, or if it's an improvement, it allows us to amortize that over, you know, at 20 years. So, people who live here...
So, the current residents today aren't paying for it.
Right, exactly. You're not paying.
The future residents coming in.
That's the additional benefit. Right, so if you're, you know, you got a lifetime, a lifespan of 30 years, you're only living here for 10 of those 30, you're not paying for the whole project for the next resident, you know, out of your pocket.
And I think I understood it, but I wanted to make sure that the audience...
No, no, it's a great point, because again, you always, you know, when you ask about that, it's a balance. You try and do as much as you can with your O&M so that you don't have to finance everything. That's why you want to have reserves. You asked a question earlier, why reserves? Well, because you don't want to have to finance everything, because now you're paying for the cost to finance it, you know, just the professionals, you're covering your interest, you don't know where your interest is going to be. So, the district has always tried to utilize a balanced approach to that. Finance the big projects, finance the ones with the certainty of the time period, and in everything else, try and keep it, you know, balanced, so...
And we got some pretty favorable bond rates.
And you, and again, it is, it's the time, yes.
Carol has a question for you.
Yes. About a year, well, September of last year, we found out that in the Pelican Preserve Fund, there was a situation between inside the gate and outside the gate, and it was going to cost more to the Pelican people, but they used reserves to take up that additional about $200,000 amount.
That was the error of mathematics.
Because of the new methodology, that would never happen again, correct?
Well, you, I mean, I can't tell you how many times you've used the word silos in these meetings, and, and that's what that's for. Again, to make sure those silos, to keep that cost separate. And again, that's one of the key reasons why you went through the methodology. We talked quite a bit about other different things, but at the core of some of that was making sure inside, outside the gate, and that worked out moving forward. So, yes, that's, the short answer is...
The new methodology, we don't have inside the gate and outside the gate anymore. We have the silos instead.
Well, but, yes, you do still do.
And we still do.
But the silos help protect it.
Okay.
Protect the cost, protect those inside, outside. It didn't go away, but now you've got a methodology that covers it better.
We won't have that situation.
No, no, you're not. You're not going to have a situation.
You can look at it and see just what impact that had, but look at those percentages, inside and outside. Huge, huge difference.
Right. Any other questions for Steven? No?
One last question. Randy, I know that you're at the other location. Do you have anybody in the room, and do they have any comments?
Yep, no one's here. So, no comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea, for that.
I did check in earlier, so...
Thank you.
I forgot to mention that, sorry.
Madam Chair, be appropriate for you to close the public hearing? If you wish, may you have a motion to close the public hearing on the budget?
I shall move.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Bob, second by Doug. All in favor, say aye to close the public hearing.
Aye. Now, it would be an opportunity for the board to have discussion about the budget that the board wishes to adopt. I know there've been a couple of numbers and adjustments, so when the board adopts the resolution, adopting the budget, a number of dollar figures need to be inserted in there. So, we need to have, I guess, some action by the board as to the various topics you talked about generally.
Okay, so can I make the move?
I guess we'll go ahead and start with Carol, because Carol was wanting to make a motion for the Lake County Sheriff's Office. This would be the time.
So, can I ask a quick question? Do we need to vote on each item that we're making?
I would say yes, yes, because then we have to do...
Two, three.
Okay, I move to eliminate the $40,000 for the license plate readers in the budget.
As an expense. I'll second that. Purely on the grounds that staff did not receive and/or receive any of the information that we asked for, and then to put salt on the open wound, tell us that we got to go through a public records request. I'm voting with you.
And I did not receive any feedback since they were in this room last.
And, and I'm on the same. So, we have a motion by Carol, second by Bob. Oh, my God, that rain. And I will, and I will agree with, my decision again was last minute, and I didn't feel like I needed to be the one following up for something that they want. So, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor of eliminating the $40,000 for the LPR camera, say aye.
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 Now, do we need a motion for funding the, the...
Carryforward?
The carryforward?
Yes.
And the funding reserve of 279,000 by using retained? Okay, I make that motion?
I'll second.
We pick the yellow of those three.
For clarification, the yellow option.
So, the yellow option, so we have a motion by...
Yeah, I just want, I want to make sure that that motion includes the stipulation of paying it back out of retained earnings.
So, that's your motion?
Yes.
To 79, yellow, and paying it back.
And using the 170...
40 carryforward.
170 option, yeah, with the stipulation that it's replenished.
I second it.
I second it, yeah.
Motion by Bob, second by Doug. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
And, and the changes that we made from last version to this version, you agree to the reduction of the 100,000 to the 75,000?
The street sweeping reduction.
The street sweeping reduction, and then the added cost to the auditor.
So, move.
Let's do one listed, let's do, I'll go for them listed. So, we're moving 100,000, so from the $100,000 for salaries, it's going to be 75.
I'll go down the way I have my list here, if that's okay. We reduced the price of street sweeping in the general fund from 47,000 to 11,000.
I shall move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Took the 100,000 maximum for the employee cola funding down to 75,000.
I shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1621.83]
And increased the amount of the auditor by seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'll approve.
Oh, second. All in favor? Aye.
I'm all about the reductions, Ed, I'll let you do that.
I know that you got very quiet, I know that you got very quiet.
Yeah, I listened to it.
You guys just stared at me, and like you said, it was okay earlier.
All right, so
And those, those changes takes us
Everything reflects what you're looking at right here.
On the screen, which takes the Gateway Single Family
Eight to seven-nine.
From, the percentage change to eight percent.
Yes.
And seven-nine for
An increase of ninety-five dollars for the year, net change.
What we need to do in Section Two of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, Stephen, you always helps to chime in on that also, we need to have the number to insert in the third line about the appropriations.
Just a minute, please.
Fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, that amount, then we need to have it broken down by the different categories. It can be inserted for the board to take a vote.
Are the revenue amounts, DE, revenue and expense for that?
Some of the expenditures are first, yeah, that's the
Stephen, you want to pull those up?
I got them.
Yes, line three, the third line of Section Two is the sum of X dollars to be raised to defer all expenditures of the district, and then you break it out by the five categories below. Madam Chair, if we can just wait for a moment for that, those calculations to take place.
Everybody music queued up.
I don't have
We need a call.
So I can see what you're asking me for here. Uh, B. I don't want to pull the wrong thing, you know. Run A still, I don't know, A.
Or Stephen, be helpful to have a brief recess to do that calculation or not?
Calculations are there, I just need to know what numbers you need, they're, they're right there.
Are the summary numbers?
Yeah, that's, that's it right there.
So in line three of Section Two of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, the number to be inserted, what's that number then, Laura?
Hang on, that's, I didn't know exactly what you were asking, which number goes on which line, because I didn't have that up on my screen, okay. So the total is this number right here, forty, correct?
Stephen?
It's these two numbers together.
If you want to put a quick sum in there, that is gonna be your
The number that goes in there is forty-nine thousand, forty-nine million, eight hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred nine.
Okay.
Four-nine, eight, seven, two, three, zero, nine.
Okay, you see the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, right, where that goes?
Yep.
Okay, and then the total general fund appropriation?
You're gonna use the two, you're gonna use your
It's both, it's both, yes.
Those two are right there.
So what's that number, Laura?
One-nine, nineteen million, nine hundred nine thousand, five hundred sixty-eight, so one-nine, nine-zero-nine, five-six-eight.
Total debt service funds.
I use this year?
That's your total, yes.
So it's two million, two million, three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-three, so two-three, four-nine, four-eight-three.
Total debt service.
Yeah.
Total capital project funds.
Right here.
Technically, those are all combined into those first two numbers, John, I guess.
Yes.
So there's no separate category?
We're not having
Yes, the forty-nine million includes both.
So we don't need that?
Now, we can split it out later for you, but it's included in those two numbers.
Okay, so, but the resolution that's in the book, that's prepared and circulated, has total capital project funds, you're saying we don't need that?
Yeah.
We don't need that line right now?
We don't.
Okay, so that, okay.
Well, we can take this and combine it together.
Okay.
If you file a modification to the resolution to say total general fund slash capital project, all the totals will still equal out to the same.
Okay, total general fund slash
Capital project.
Capital project fund, so we combine those two categories, okay? And the next one is the total enterprise fund amount? A dollar amount.
It is twenty-seven million, nine hundred five thousand, three hundred twenty-nine, so two-seven, nine-zero-five, three-two-nine.
The total of all funds?
That's the forty-nine million, eight seventy-two, three oh nine.
Okay, so just recap, your recoup, I mean, going back to the resolution, in Section Two under appropriations, it'll be, it'll read, here's hereby appropriated out of the revenues of the Gateway Services Community Development District for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, the sum of forty-nine million, eight hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred nine dollars, to be divided and appropriated in the following fashion, total general fund slash capital project fund, nineteen million, nine hundred nine thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars, total debt service funds, two million, three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars, total enterprise fund, twenty-seven million, nine hundred five thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars, the total of all funds are forty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-two thousand
Million.
Forty-nine million, eight hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred nine dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
Stephen?
I'll double-check your numbers, yep.
Okay, so that would be the, the board to adopt the resolution with those revisions and modifications to Section Two.
I so move.
So we have a motion by Bob, second by Carol, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Tony.
Madam Chair, the next public hearing is a public hearing to consider the levying imposition of special assessments, and as noticed in the caption, it's to receiving public comment on in public hearing to consider the imposition of non-avalanche special assessments on lands within the district, to fund the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed final budget, and the adoption of a final non-avalanche special assessment role, and to provide for the levy collection and enforcement of the special assessments, and to consider the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, making a determination of special benefit and imposing special assessments, and certifying an assessment role for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. So the public hearing is now open, Madam Chair? Any, any registered speakers?
Anybody willing to speak on the
Anybody who spoke on the budget also have the opportunity to speak on this particular action, this is the action whereby the board funds the budget by levying assessments, uh, part of the budget, levying assessments on the properties in the district, the amount, equalizing the rolls, and determining the amount of, for each property will be paying.
Laura, could you put that final chart back up there again, so everybody can see it?
If I most cooperates, yes, I absolutely can.
I don't know what the assessment
I gotta get there, Carol, it's on a different tab, give me a second.
While Laura is doing that, in the meeting, in the meeting book are the affidavits of publication of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, they're advertised two days, seven thirteen, and seven twenty, twenty twenty-five, and affidavit of mailing of the notice assessment letters to the property owners within the district as required by Florida statutes, and previously, as indicated for the budget hearing, we had the affidavit of publication of the hearing for the budget and the assessments twice as required by Florida law.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
I knew you'd get all that, no doubt.
And Stephen, as far as calculating what those numbers are gonna be
So nobody would like to speak, I just want to make sure.
My question concerns are
Well, if you want to, you can get back
Basically what I spoke of earlier.
Okay. Okay, you can stand up to the podium, please, and just say your, say your name.
My name's Paul Vians, was the new methodology, is that, because in two thousand twenty-three, I, I was assessed for point seven EAUs, and now I'm at one point one five, and I'm assuming that has to do with the dramatic increase. I'm not, I'm just not understanding why the, why such a big increase, but also it says that point seven to one point one five, does the one, does the point seven to one point one five, does that mean that the increase is how much I'm paying?
Your, your increase would be specifically to your property, so I, I wouldn't know, but part of the increase or decrease, it has to do with the new method, with the new assessment methodology that we do have, so without looking at your individual property, I couldn't tell what percentage came from the assessment methodology, or what percentage came from, you know, O and M or, or capital or whatever, but you'll be able to?
What kind of business?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, Tony, when you had us add in the, it's not one point one five, it's a one for administrative services and a point one five for the
Paul, Paul, you're, just to be clear, you're comparing your twenty twenty-three taxes, not your twenty twenty-four?
No, I, I
Or your twenty twenty-five.
Because the, I ask because the twenty twenty-three bond series debt hit, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, this, this year, and so you would have seen that from twenty three, twenty-three to twenty-four.
Yes. The letter that you got la, a year ago for twenty-four was the first year with the debt assessment for the bond, looking at twenty-three to, you skipped a whole year where we had the first year.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, I don't know what's really happening here, it's hard to understand all this, all I know is, one moment I'm paying a little under a thousand, I mean, I run a business, I got a lot, a lot to think about, so I just see numbers, thousand bucks, twenty-four hundred dollars, I mean, I'm like, oh my gosh, you know?
We would love to sit with you and look at your specific parcel one-on-one, and try to go through and, and better explain it.
Yeah, because I just, I just don't understand why that would be, I mean, it's, you know, basic.
Well, we did take out additional debt for the, for the long-term capital projects, so I, without looking at your property specifically, and from hearing what you're saying, you're comparing twenty twenty-three, but I'd love to sit down, Laura, and I can sit down with you one-on-one, and look at your specific property.
It's the same thing I'm seeing.
But that's what, having heard what you've said, I, I'm, I'm believing that's the case.
Okay, and two, the same as TJ was saying, is I just want to, I just want to see the value there too, as, you know, it's a small space, you know, and so it's
Sure, and I just, I just want to point out, you don't, these two don't get added together, it's one EAU for the admin costs, and it's point one five for parks and recs, so there's different, we put the things in silos, so there's admin, which you're getting assessed a one for, we have the roadway costs, which are based on trip generation, and then the parks and rec, you're only paying point one five, where the residentials are paying a one, so you're actually, that's some residential properties are paying, what are you paying on together, but we can sit and talk.
Yes.
The biggest thing that I do hear from him is the size of his unit, but this is not like your property taxes that you pay.
Correct.
So I think that's a big thing that's different between the district and the county, is that you would have paid your property taxes on the size, and that is not how it goes for the district, it's not in the size of your units, that's how it's, the calculation is made, it's on your stormwater, on your, it's everything else, the infrastructure.
The benefit, the benefit your property receives, it doesn't base on the size and the value of your property, it's not
That's like the biggest difference.
Right.
This phrase, non-avalor, means it's not based upon value.
Paul, can you add your phone number and maybe an email, and we can, we can meet with you?
And then you're gonna meet with him and Lauren as well?
Warren, yes, we've got, we're pulling your, your information up too right now.
All right, so, Tony, what do we stand?
Flavia, I just, I failed to mention earlier, talking about the added benefits for the commercial parcels, it's stormwater as well, it may not be for your building stormwater parking lot, but we do clean all of our district's stormwater pipes, which lead into the ponds, which end up leading to the Six Mile Cypress Slough, so it is a broader benefit to the entire Gateway community.
It keeps the roads dry, so you can get to the buildings also.
Yeah.
Stormwater management system helps take the runoff from the roads. Madam Chair, I think there are no other public
Yeah, ma'am, ma'am, thank you. Go ahead, Tony. Do you like to speak, do you want, do you have a comment? Okay. Go ahead, Tony.
Be appropriate to have a motion to close the public hearing?
All right, so, do I have a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Laura, the, and Stephen, the revisions to the preliminary assessment role will be made based upon the actions by the board in adopting the budget, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And the revisions are be reflected, is that what you have up on the screen, Laura, does that reflect all the changes to the budget that
Assessment role is already updated, this is all done, everything's good, yes.
The, the street sweeper, the
Yes, everything we discussed is included in there.
This update will be labeled version seven, I hope.
It's version six.
Well, six, you
Version seven.
No, this will be labeled the adopted budget.
Yes.
Okay, we're version seven, but yeah.
He did his versions.